I'd like to welcome you and call the order of the August 20th, 2019, Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To supply right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are to the approval of our agenda. Is anyone wishing to add anything to this evening's agenda? Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, I would like to move to add, under Business Items, Agenda Item 7F, to amend a previously adopted ordinance, number 029-19.
Second.
Motion and a second to add, to amend a previously adopted ordinance. Further discussion of adding that? It's on the dais before you, so we'll discuss that at length when we get to that item. So, all in favor of adding that as Item 7F, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that item has been added. Councilmember Kachardi?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd move to add, under Consent Agenda, Item Number C, the excusal of Councilmember Deener for work obligations.
Second.
Got us. Motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Deener for, due to business obligations, and add that to our consent agenda. Any further discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? He has been excused, or added to the consent agenda to be excused. Any further amendments or additions to the agenda?
No, but I would make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion of our agenda items? Hearing none, the agenda, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda's been approved. All right, we are to our first citizen comment period, and it is for any items on this evening's agenda. We have a second period, comment period, at the end of the meeting, and I just, as a reminder to just people making public comment, to be respectful with your comments. Inappropriate language and personal attacks shouldn't happen here during our citizen comment period, so. Anybody wishing to address the council for items on this evening's agenda? Hearing none, I will close the first citizen comment period. We are to our consent agenda.
Approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Further discussion of...
I thought you would go down the list of people signed up.
Um, the signup sheets for the public hearing, which is in a few minutes, on the plastic bag ban? Okay.
Okay, but nothing on, I signed up for, I signed up on the list.
That signup sheets for the plastic bag ban. There's a public hearing.
Anything else?
No, sir. There's a second public comment period for, items not on the agenda later in the meeting. Okay. All right, so there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We don't have any presentations, we do have a public hearing, and related to Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 6.20, Plastic Bag Reduction. Mr. Bond, would you like to read that item in?
Yes, thank you. The city of Port Orchard has been working in close cooperation with Kitsap County to develop an ordinance for single-use plastic bag reduction, with the goal of reducing solid waste and litter, encouraging the use of recyclable bags, and protecting the public health and welfare. Kitsap County and the cities of Bremerton and Bainbridge Island have already adopted similar ordinances. In summary, the city's ordinance requires that retail establishments shall not provide single-use plastic carryout bags, with limited exceptions for bags used for bulk produce, meat, bakery goods, et cetera. If recycled bags, uh, plastic bags are provided, a pass-through charge of eight cents shall be collected. Exemptions for the pass-through charge are provided for local food banks, or for food banks and food assistance programs, and for users of vouchers or electronic benefits cards for state and federal food assistance programs. Tonight, we are continuing a public hearing that was opened on the 13th of August, and the recommendation is to approve the ordinance as presented.
With that, I will reopen the public hearing on this matter. So, Mr. Jones, you did sign up to testify on this matter, but you did not want to testify on the plastic bag ban? Okay, I will scratch your name from here. Is there anyone wishing to testify on the plastic bag ban? Took some testimony last week? Mr. Showers? You look like you want to.
Well...
You gotta come to the microphone, though.
I apologize for not getting involved in this sooner, but...
Could just first, I know you, but please identify yourself for the...
Uh, Bob Showers, Port Orchard, 2346 Garden Drive. I've been involved with Little League, so I haven't really had a chance to take a look at this, so I'm sorry. But I did have some questions, and the findings that you guys, the research that you did, where did that come from? As far as...
It's really, there's a point in time where you're supposed to provide testimony.
Oh, me?
Yeah, we're not, we're not prepared to answer your question.
Okay, so, all right, but anyway, what I'd like to say then is, if everybody's gonna be assessed this, I guess, is there a reason why we're exempting the people that are on these federal programs and state programs? Since we're already paying for it anyway?
Um, I can answer that. I, I've got a...
Well, so, Bob, why don't you go ahead and ask, go ahead and ask your questions, and maybe someone else in the audience, and in the, that's knowledgeable of your questions, we'll be able to answer them.
Okay, so, I guess I'm asking...
Well, you're gonna need to finish your testimony, and then she can come up and potentially answer your questions.
Okay, well, I was, I was wondering, basically, about that, how come, how come we're exempting that? And also, city limits, does that include Walmart and places like that?
They are in the city limits.
Okay, so they're gonna be required to do paper bags, too?
Kitsap County has adopted a ban, and if we ban, have one, too, the only place in Kitsap County that wouldn't have one at this point would be the city of Paulsboro.
Okay, so is there, okay, so we're basically following what the county's doing?
The county, Bremerton, and Bainbridge Island.
Okay. And that's our, you guys already researched that and did all that, and...
They passed their, they passed their ordinances.
The best interest of the city to do that?
I'm...
All right, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm sorry, like I said, I, I probably at fault for not getting involved sooner, so.
Okay, thanks for your testimony. Anyone else wishing to testify, or to testify on this matter?
Hi, my name is Catherine Holm, and I'm with the Washington Food Industry Association. I am their Legislative Director and Legal Counsel. So, I'm just gonna answer the question, 'cause you actually heard from one of our members last week. I was unfortunately in Colorado, so that's why I didn't attend. So, to his question, the reason why you have that little bit about SNAP recipients, excuse me, it's because in 2011, we worked with the USDA and the US Attorney's Office, and that was the guidance that they gave us, as a way to make sure that we are federally compliant. So, that's honestly the only reason why that part is in it. I don't have the actual letter with me, but if you're interested, I can find it and send it to you all at a later date, just not today, at this very moment.
So, is it, I'm getting, so it's not discriminatory, or something?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so, so the idea is then we're not, like, impacting low-income who cannot actually afford to pay that five, eight, or 10 cents, depending on where you're at. Is there any questions that I can answer while I'm up here?
Okay, thank you for your testimony.
Thanks.
Okay, others wishing to testify on the plastic bag ban?
So, can I just say one more thing, then?
Certainly.
Okay, so...
Please come to the microphone, so we can...
Sorry, we're recording.
So, the eight cents, where did that come from? I mean, when I'm in Seattle, and I'm in other places, I get three cents, sometimes two cents. So, I was just wondering, was the eight cents something the county came up with, and we're just following suit with the county?
Part of the ordinance that the county adopted, Bremerton adopted, we did, the state was proposing to take, so the language we have is very similar to what the state was proposing to do. And they didn't, the legislature did not take action on it. So, we're trying to have an ordinance, so if the state takes action, it, there isn't much in the way of change, but the state hasn't taken action, didn't take action this last session.
Okay.
Yes. Is that fairly accurate, Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, others wishing to testify on the plastic bag ban? Okay, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move to close the public hearing on the plastic bag reduction.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on the plastic bag reduction. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will close the public hearing. We are to our Business Items, which is, first is 7A, Adoption of an Ordinance, Adopting a New Municipal Code 6.20, Plastic Bag Reduction. Mr. Bond?
Yes, this is the ordinance on which we just held a public hearing. The staff recommendation on this ordinance is to adopt it as presented.
Okay, with that, any deliberations or discussion before we...
My question is, do we want to discuss and then have a motion, or do we want to have a motion and then discuss?
I think you need a motion to be able to enter a discussion.
Okay, then I would move to adopt the, the ordinance adopting Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 6.20, as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Okay, understood, as the motion maker, would you like to start the discussion?
Well, I'm going to talk about, and I wished I had outlined what I wanted to say, but this issue has been before the Economic Development Tourism Committee for the better part of a couple of years, and we had conversations with cities and counties that had already adopted the ordinance, and the ordinances were all fairly similar. And then, the state took it up this year, and the House bill that came through, and the Senate bill that came through, had different language regarding the pass-through fee. And the final bill that did not get action had taken that pass-through fee to be eight cents. It was made very clear to us that if and when the state does take action on this, they will preempt any local ordinances on it. And so with that, the Economic Development Committee heard testimony, robust testimony, from some of our business community indicating that they would prefer it be market-driven and not be a set amount, primarily concerned that we have some smaller merchants that already have used paper bags, and their customers are not used to paying a fee. And I know our committee, in all of our deliberations, had felt strongly it be market-driven, but I know for myself, knowing that it will probably be preempted at some point, I would not want to ask our retailers to, and also because the rest of the county's done a certain way, I would not ask our retailers to do their, the programming of all their equipment one way, and then have to redo it shortly another way. That's why I can support the eight cents. I did have email conversations today with Mr. Piercy, because I wanted to be very clear that this eight cents is collected at the point of sale, when the retail establishment, for each recycled paper carryout bag, or reusable carryout bag made of film plastic provided by the retail establishment, it shall, shall collect the pass-through charge of not less than eight cents. So, they can, the example I used with Mr. Piercy today is the Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce, several years ago, and for several years, had a campaign, a shop local campaign called Shop South Kitsap First, and they provided recyclable bags to members of this particular campaign they were doing. And so, I wanted to be clear that if our merchants had promotional bags that were not recycled paper, or of the film plastic bags, they can give those away at no charge. I think there's an opportunity for some creative people, entrepreneurs in our community, to be able to provide some sort of bag that they don't have to charge for.
And that's a reusable bag?
That's a reusable bag, yes, yes.
Mr. Claussen?
You know, when I read through this, I've been thinking about it a lot, and we've had testimony here earlier about this issue, and I kept getting hung up on that eight cents as well, and whether it should be market-driven. And two things that, one, really said it for me, was the discussion about trying, not necessarily that this is our responsibility, but still trying to make sure that we have a level playing field for our merchants out there, and when you have a mega retailer who could very easily absorb the cost of paper bags and providing it for no cost, that concerned me, especially for our smaller retail firms, who would, you know, that would be a big bite into their bottom line if they had to provide these more expensive bags and not try to recover it. So, that kind of said it for me, and then, you know, in preparation for this, I've been preparing myself, and I have certainly the canvas bags, but I've also purchased a couple of the bags that are available at the grocery stores, that are the reusable bags, that have the fold-down base, and they just work better than just the canvas bags, in my opinion. And when I paid three bucks for one of those things, it's kind of like, well, if I'm gonna pay three bucks for something like this, I guess eight cents is reasonable if somebody elected not to use what I'm going to be using. So, from those two aspects, I guess I came around to where I can support this as well, especially the eight cents.
Others?
Yeah, I would add one thing to that, and the research that I was doing, too, you know, there's arguments out there about the sustainability of creating paper bags, paper bags versus plastic bags, and one thing that they found in other jurisdictions that actually charge for these bags, is they're more apt to go to the true reusable bag. So, it's actually encouraging people to stay away from both, plastic and paper, thus the overall impacts on the environment. Without that fee, people are just, you know, now we're filling our landfills up with paper, so. It's just encouraging people to go to a totally recyclable product.
I'll make one more comment, in that I was down at Target in Gig Harbor the other day, and when I got to the checkout stand, I was asked, do you want to buy a bag? I mean, they didn't offer a bag, do you want to buy a bag?
Ms. Lucarelli?
Initially, I had a hard time with that pass-through charge, and I was actually not going to vote for this because of it. With more research that I've done, also in hearing from the retailers, and given that the state would use that amount, it bothered me, but I am going to vote for it now, and the title of this is Plastic Bag Reduction. We've talked about this so much, it bothers me to a degree, because it only starts to deal with a problem on such a small level, but it is a start, and we do have to deal with our waste, and to change behavior, a lot of times, we have to have a price to it. So, I'm voting in favor, but I would like to see, in a year or so, what this looks like. If we've had good results, I know at that same Target in Gig Harbor, I had a whole bunch of stuff, and I did not have an extra bag, and I'm telling you, I walked out of there juggling stuff, 'cause I said no to the bag. I wasn't gonna pay for it. So, you know, I'm, this is, this is a difficult thing, and, but I am gonna vote for it, I think we do need to start someplace, and because there is so much other support across the United States, actually, many states are adopting ordinances just like this, and so I think it's a move that we have to deal with, and I do think it's gonna be a little tricky for families, hauling in mountains of bags, not easy. I'm not sure what this is gonna look like down the road, but I'm giving it a try, and see what happens, and see if this helps the environment.
One more comment, just for the record, this is, these bags are subject to Washington State sales tax, and so it won't be just eight cents, it'll be closer to nine cents, so just understanding that.
Yeah.
Depending on the jurisdiction you reside in.
Which is similar to states.
Correct. Councilman Chang reminded me that the ordinance says eight cents or more. That's the minimum. So, they can charge more if they feel it's important to do that.
Any more comments or questions on this matter? Okay, with that, you'd be voting on a motion to adopt a Port Orchard Municipal Code 6.20 as presented, a, a plastic bag reduction program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7B, Adoption of an Ordinance Providing Life, and Accidental Death and Dismemberment Insurance for Councilmembers and Non-Union Employees. Debbie Lund, you're here with us tonight.
Good evening. So, the ordinance in front of you is a result of a notification we received earlier this month from Standard Life Insurance notifying us that they were ending our policy that we currently have, that provides for $5,000 worth of life insurance for each of you and our reserve officers. So, in searching out additional options, we discovered that we can continue your current policy of $5,000 life and $5,000 accidental death and dismemberment through the Association of Washington Cities at a much cheaper rate. So, this ordinance will do that, if you approve. Secondly, the ordinance, because of the significant cost savings, will actually increase the policies for councilmembers up to the current non-union rate of $50,000 life, effective with your, when your terms renew. You cannot affect your benefits in your current term of office, so the ordinance would do that for your terms in two different increments, 2020 and 2022. And lastly, the ordinance would add accidental death and dismemberment of $50,000 value to the non-union employees. That's a benefit that non-union employees currently do not have. Accidental death and dismemberment insurance is incredibly inexpensive. Net cost of all of those changes, once fully implemented, is less than $50 a month. So, staff recommendation is approval of the ordinance in front of you.
Just clarifying, Debbie, so it's a $50,000 accidental death, and then an additional accidental and death, accidental death and dismemberment policy for a total benefit of 100? Do they compound or not?
The only time, so if, if somebody has a life insurance policy with an accidental death and dismemberment rider, and passes away as a result of an accidental death, as opposed to like an illness, that's when the accidental death policy pays out.
Okay.
So, right now, if a non-union employee died as a result of an illness, it'd be $50,000. Died as a result of an accident, it'd be $50,000. If this is adopted, and after September 1st, that employee died as a result of an accident, it'd pay out at $100,000.
So, it does compound?
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion. Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
I move to adopt an ordinance which provides for life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance benefits for city councilmembers and non-represented city employees.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Claussen. Any questions for Debbie, or any comments? Hearing none, you'd be voting on the Adoption of an Ordinance Providing Life and Accidental Death and Dismemberment Insurance for councilmembers and non-union employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7C, Adoption of a Resolution Approving Mayoral Appointments to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Clerk Rennerston?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. So, pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 2.22, and state law, the city council should review the membership of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, known as LTAC, annually, and make appropriate changes by recommendation of the mayor. The mayor is recommending a representative from the following organizations/businesses to serve on the LTAC upon council's acceptance. A business required to collect the tax would be Days Inn and Comfort Inn. An organization involved in the activities would be Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce and the Bay Street, Port Orchard Bay Street Association. In addition, at the July 9th, 2018 Economic Development and Tourism Committee, Councilmember Rosa Pepe agreed to serve as the chair of the committee, and typically is re-looked at at the even years in January. So, at the council's discretion, I would assume that he would remain on the committee for one more year as the chair. With that, the mayor recommends approving the appointments of the members and the chairs as presented.
And the Councilmember Claussen?
Yes, just a question, and maybe it's just my memory is failing me. In the past, have we approved what agencies would be represented, or the actual individuals from those agencies? Because I seem to remember both, and that's...
It will be Matt Murphy from the Chamber, and Bobby Stewart from the Bay Street Association, correct? Those are the two individuals that I've talked to, or the clerk's offices talked to.
It was more of...
Yeah.
Just remembering it being presented a little differently than just simply the, I know that the agencies are the, those who are participants, because of the requirements that you have to have folks from those who generate, and from those who typically...
Brandon may have the answer, but I think that the law requires us to appoint the agency, and then they can send a representative, but she probably knows.
Correct, so the RCW states that we have to appoint the organization, but historically, we've, in our staff report and resolution, it does appoint the agencies with communications with the mayor as to who he prefers to serve as the, on the committee.
Okay, I'm just trying to get my memory clear.
And we have a matrix that goes back about 10 years, and I really try to rotate through the nonprofits that receive those funds, and so everybody gets a, a chance to serve on the committee, if they choose to. And we reach out to visit Kitsap just about every year, and they, they don't seem, they don't, they don't want to serve on the committee, which is fine, others do.
And maybe what you're remembering, which I typically do provide, but I apologize, I did not provide that historical spreadsheet as to who served, and that's where we list the name and not the organization, so that's probably where the confusion on my part was.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the mayoral appointment of your representative from the Days Inn and Comfort Inn as business required to collect the tax, and the Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce, and the Port Orchard Bay Street Association as organizations involved in activities, to serve on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and to confirm the appointment of Councilmember Rosa Pepe as chair of the committee.
Second.
Thank you, Jay.
Second by Councilmember Kachardi. Yes, thank you, Jay. And other comments or questions about this matter?
I think what the challenge has become for the mayor and for the committee is the limited lodging establishments that we have in town. Yeah.
Yes, I lost, I had three and three last year, and now we're down to two and two, and thankfully we have the two. Looked at one point, we were gonna have one and one, which isn't a very big committee. So, all right, with that, you'd be voting on adoption of a resolution approving the mayoral appointments to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Cost 7D, Approval of Change Order Number Two to Contract Number 077-18 with Snyder Equipment Inc. for the well drilling project, well number 13 drilling project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, your honor, councilmembers. On December 11th, 2018, not 19, the Port Orchard City Council authorized contract C07718 with Snyder Equipment for the well 13 drilling project. During the first phase of construction activities, the pilot drilling did not encounter sufficiently promising water-bearing material to warrant completion without first seeing if better materials existed below the initial 1,500 feet of drilling depth. As a result, minor... As a result, minor change one and change order number one were executed to extend the pilot drilling to 2,010 feet. Sufficient water production potential was found between 15 and 2,010 feet. Execution of Schedule B work under this contract is warranted. The deeper completion and greater length of the recommended screen assembly than originally considered under Schedule B, the final well drilling and well screening casing placement require change in scope and cost to reflect the current project. Tonight's action is for the approval of change order two, extension of casing depth and screening adjustments. That's $512,099, or $99.19. Approval of this change order brings the current value of all change orders to date to a total of 561, 263, 89 or 40.2 percent. And under fiscal impact, funding is provided from the 6,000, or 6 million and 60,000 SRF loan, which is part of the 2019, 2020 budget. This is one portion of the ongoing amount. Long-term estimates still show the entire project falling within the budget. So budget amendment's currently not required. And we still have different phases of the project. The PRV and main portions, the Maple Street portion, so there's value engineering opportunities even in there. And we've already made one significant change, which was the directional boring through Sunset Cemetery rather than open cutting. So we're continuing to value this and, you know, keep, try to keep us on budget. So with that, staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute change order number two with Snyder Equipment in an amount not to exceed $512,399.19.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute change orders number two with Snyder Equipment Inc. in an amount not to exceed $512,399.19.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Claussen. Questions for Mr. Dorsey? As we all know, this is the source water we need so that we can wane our dependence in Bremerton on our, in the downtown system. We did last week finally get approval on the treat, the treatment system on well nine approved by Health and it's operational. Wish it would have happened a little sooner, but Department of Health moves at their own pace. So it happened last week and we're drawing water from that well again, which is very nice.
Just a comment that this particular water source has nothing to do with the current moratorium that's focused there, you know, very small area in the McCormick Woods area. Those two have nothing in common.
Absolutely correct. Other questions or comments? With that, you'd be voting on change order number two to contract number 077-18 with Snyder Equipment for well number 13 drilling project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Number 27E, approval of change order number four to contract number 023-18 with Neptune Marine LLC for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment III Construction Project. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you. On April 24th, 2018, the Port Orchard City Council approved contract number C023-18 with Neptune Marine LLC in an amount not to exceed $375,947.51 for the 2018 Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment III Construction. On June 29th, 2018, the city's Public Works Director approved change order number one, which was in the amount of $7,184.36 in association with revised measurement and payment methodology for the placement of concrete retaining walls. On July 11th, 2018, the city's Public Works Director approved change order two in the amount of $13,414.80 in association with revised measurement and payment methodology for excavations, removal, haul and disposal of the excessive concrete rubble shoreline riprap encountered. Both change orders were executed within established administrative limitations. On September 11th, 2018, the city council approved change order number three in the amount of $98,593.74 for an agreed-upon recapitulation of the project schedule values, overages and underages for the completed work, as well as providing the cost inferential associated with the cable fence versus chain link fence, the electrical conduit, handholds and cables admitted from the original plans and specs and substantial cost over and associated with the previously approved change order two, which was the concrete rubble. Change order four provides for the final recapitulation of the project schedule values for work completed since change order three and provides the final cost of concrete rubble removal, including a contractor discount, which was not fully captured in change orders two and three. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute change order number four with Neptune Marine LLC in an amount not to exceed $24,561.47, which is the total project change order amount of $143,754.37 for the 2018 and now 19 Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment III Construction.
Councilmember Ashby?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute change order number four with Neptune Marine LLC in an amount not to exceed $24,561.47 for the 2018 Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment Number Three Construction.
Second.
Councilmember Karchardi? And I think that 2018 and 19, actually that project spanned a kind of a year-long window, but over two fiscal years.
Right, we, we fell into a series of, didn't get it done by Labor Day, then we had the equipment strike, then we had the natural gas explosion, then we hit weather, and then we had the Rockwell project. So, yeah, we, we extended the, they still have working days for the contractor.
Questions for Mr. Dorsey on this matter? You'd be voting to approve change order number four to contract number 02318 with Neptune Marine LLC for the Bay Street Pedestrian Pathway Segment III Construction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to the item that we added, item F, amended ordinance number 29-18. And this was an action we took last week that, what I understand, that the wrong ordinance got attached, a prior version. So Mr. Bond, you want to address that?
Yes, thank you. So the ordinance before you tonight shows the amendments that were supposed to be included in the version that came to you for your vote on August 13th. This had previously been to work study in its, the red line form that's before you tonight at the July 16th work study meeting. And we had originally slated to bring this forward on July 23rd. However, due to a full agenda, it was postponed and somehow the wrong version of this ordinance got put into the folder for August 13th. So this ordinance is just to make sure that what we adopted last week matches what you reviewed at your work study meeting of July 16th. And the changes that are in this ordinance really relate to simplifying the process for getting permits to do really minor land disturbing activities. This is like tree cutting activities. It's making sure that you don't have to have soils reports or other documents that are code previously required. We're trying to create an easier process for people to do minor work on their property or to build a single-family residence. And so some of those changes were inadvertently left out of what you adopted last week.
It appears to, it gives some waiver authority to the city engineer also, I see in the language.
Correct.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yes, I move to amend ordinance number 029-19 relating to clarifying requirements for minor land disturbing activity permits and amending certain sections of Title 20 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code by incorporating the strikeout deletions and the underlined additions to Port Orchard Municipal Code 20 dot 140 dot 070 subsection 2L and Port Orchard Municipal Code 20 point 140 point 080 subsections 1, 2, 4 and 7 as set forth in the revised document presented by the Department of Community Development.
Second.
And a second to amend the ordinance that we voted on last week?
Right, and it's my understanding that what we have before us is the ordinance as we voted on it last week with the corrections, the additions and the, and the deletions and additions in red.
Correct. And this is the version that you saw at your work study a month ago. Just the wrong version got in the packet, the prior version. Questions for Mr. Bond? Hearing none. You'd be voting on amending ordinance number 29-19. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. So we are to our discussion items. Mr. Bond, and there's no action to be taken on this. We were going to have a discussion this evening on Vision 2050. And you prepared to lead us in that discussion?
Yes. On July 19th, 2019, the Puget Sound Regional Council released the draft Vision 2050 Regional Plan, which is intended to guide development in the central Puget Sound region over the next few decades. The regional policies of Vision 2050 will directly influence the city's next comprehensive plan update in 2024. In particular, the city will need to accommodate any changes in population and employment targets through its zoning and infrastructure policies. Back in March, we provided comments to PSRC on some of the draft policies as they were being vetted through the Growth Management Policy Board and the Regional Staff Committee, of which I am a member. And we later worked with Kitsap County and the just, other jurisdictions in Kitsap County to have some minor changes made to the allocations that were coming to Kitsap County because we wanted to make sure that we didn't end up with the same situation of having to contract our UGAs. And those policies have made their way into this draft document. In my staff report, I've tried to highlight just a couple of the, the hundreds of policies that are in this document that I think are important. One of which, the Vision 2050 for the first time calls for maintaining stable urban growth areas. While that's not a guarantee that they won't contract, I think it is something that we can use as a defense if we get put in a position where people are saying the Buildable Lands report suggests we should contract our UGAs, but the regional policy says we should maintain stable growth areas. It gives us a footing in, in that sort of legal argument. There's several grant funding policies that reaffirm the prioritization of funding our regional growth centers and then our local centers as a secondary tier for countywide funding. I think that in our comp plan, we've done a good job already of identifying local centers and we're continuing to work on sub-area plans so that we're hopefully eligible to go after those transportation dollars as we move forward. There's other policies that are in Vision 2050 that I think are more assertive in trying to compel local jurisdictions to spend money consistent with vision, to invest in infrastructure and other priorities to help implement vision. And while I don't think that anybody's going to appeal our, our budget on the basis of this, we need to make comp planning decisions certainly that, that help implement the strategy. Mark is probably going to be concerned potentially because I know that we do use some pesticides in our parks control and weed control along our roads. There's specific policies on the use of fertilizers and trying to minimize those. There's also greenhouse gas emission policies. There are strengthened concurrency, for transportation concurrency requirements to ensure that we have adequate road facilities to accommodate growth. And then there's specific policies dealing with stormwater runoff and culverts and other issues that are potentially costly to the city. I don't think, I'm, I'm not surprised to see any of this stuff and I, I wanted to bring those few points to your attention and ask if, in your review of the document, you have any other concerns that we should be communicating to PSRC? And if we don't have concerns, I think because of their action to do what Kitsap County jurisdictions requested, we should probably write a letter of support for the draft plan as it's presented and, or write the draft letter of support with a couple of minor comments. And so with that, I, I leave it to you to discuss and provide me with some direction.
Questions for Mr. Bond? I know it's a very small document to read.
I hope you're not looking for comments tonight.
Well, our, our comment deadline is before our work study meeting in September. And because we didn't have a work study meeting in August, we really don't have a whole lot of opportunity other than at the land use committee meeting. And so I guess our window is somewhat limited and, and we can choose to write a letter, we can not write a letter. But we don't have a whole lot more opportunity for discussion unless you just want to kick it to the land use and have land use write a letter on behalf of the city.
I would propose that we bring this back as a discussion item at our next city council meeting on September 10th. And with that, actually, how about an action item that evening to, for, with, with the letter? Nick could draft a letter. You guys give Nick, if you have comments, you get it to him before September 10th. And I think we would need to have an action letter to, to support the proposed letter that he would put in our packet on September 10th. And if you want any...
We do have, I know we've got a full agenda and I know you're trying to schedule another land use committee, we can split that up. But we do have a meeting coming up on the 26th and perhaps that second meeting would be before the deadline as well. But we could at least talk about it on the 26th in advance of the September 10th meeting.
Yes. Kind of direct, give Nick guidance on that letter of support and what that looks like so that it can make the agenda. Councilmember Claussen?
I think your, your phrasing was perfect in that it's a letter of support because I, I agree with Nick. If they made changes based on our last comments, we should at least indicate general support. And if we have specifics, as Nick indicated, I think that's appropriate. But I think generally speaking, it would be a letter of support with any comments. And I could support either the land use committee or any of us that have an issue, get it to Nick and he can incorporate that in and then we can review the letter in its entirety and plus it or tweak it or whatever.
So I'm hearing support, so land use will look at it on their 20, August 24th meeting, 26th meeting, thank you. And Nick and his staff will work on a letter of support because we, they did address our concerns in our prior letter and we appreciate that they did that for us. And any other comments or direction we may have for the process?
I'm, I'm in agreement with what has been said, but when the sections of Vision 2050 that I've read so far, I don't have issues with for the city of Port Orchard. But I'm wondering if something at the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, we need to make sure that, that we're in compliance there also. And I'm, I'm looking at this transportation funding and to make sure that everyone's dealing with the centers' issues and what's in people's comp plans. Vision 2050 also requires the county planning-wide polit, planning-wide policies to be rewritten by the end of December of 2021, I believe. And I just want to make sure we're on schedule to do all of those things. But again, that's not necessarily city of Port Orchard, that's more, you know, as all the jurisdictions, to make sure we're okay.
Through that county-wide agency.
Through the county-wide agency, exactly.
Correct. Good point. Okay, with that, we'll move on. We're going to provide comments to Mr. Bond and land use will take this matter up.
And preferably if we can have any comments before the land use meeting, then we kind of know what's in front of us.
That'd be great.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay, we're on to council committee reports. And we, Finance Committee just set the date, they haven't had a meeting. They just set the date, September 10th, 5:15 here at City Hall for their next meeting. Economic Development and Tourism, I don't know that you've met since then?
No, we have not met since our last meeting. We're scheduled to meet September 9th, 9:30 here in council chambers.
Would, today we got the revised videos back.
Yes.
And I have two little tiki-tacky things that, and maybe I let them go, but I'll let you guys decide that. One of them is just, one of the images, McCormick Village Park still had the orange construction fencing behind it in the image with the kids playing in it. And then the other, replaced most of the images of Tremont with the complete road with the striping and stuff, but there's one that's not. But it's actually a pretty good shot and I like the angle of it, so.
Did you see them yet, Jay?
They just, this afternoon, about 3 o'clock.
Right, they came in and I believe they were sent to members of the Economic Development Tourism Committee because we've, we've been looking at them. And I looked at them, I did. And I looked at them, I did a quick view of them, and liked them. I didn't look to the detail that you had, but yeah.
So do you want that committee to look at these one more time, or do you want to take them to a work study?
I don't think we want to wait till our September 9th. That's why Brandy sent them out, so that if they have comments, and then we can bring them, I think, to full council before we ask Mike to do anything different with them.
Okay, so September 10th, let's put those on there for, I didn't think Brandy and I already discussed that, that we would have them on this, and we'd put them on the screen here somewhere. Okay. Utilities.
Our next meeting is September 16th, 9:30 a.m. here. And then Sewer Advisory, we did meet. And basically, we got an update on the projects going on over at West Sound and Utility, our sewer plant. They're doing most of the work themselves, so most of these projects came in under budget. And the good news is they don't look like they're going to have to be raising their rates this year. And we also discussed the change of the service area on Geiger and Blueberry. And that is something that looks like it makes a great deal of sense. It will eliminate the need for an additional lift station, so we give our blessings to it. Our next meeting is going to be November 6th, and that will be here at City Hall, that's 6:30 p.m.
I think we moved utilities to the 23rd to accommodate council.
Oh, thank you for that, that's right, we did.
Okay. Sewer Advisory, do you have any report there?
That's what I just gave.
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
Land Use, we just heard they have two meetings scheduled for later this month, I believe.
August 26th, 9:30 a.m. at DCD will be our next meeting.
Next meeting, okay, and then length the agenda.
And then I think with Councilmember Fred, if you, or Councilmember Chang, if you agree, September 4th, we'd like to have a second meeting to break that up. We weren't sure if you were available at 9:30 in the morning.
Wednesday?
Yes.
No.
You're not, okay. We'll work on a second date to try to break that meeting up since we have 12 or 13 items on the agenda.
Okay. Lodging Tax, I think we know who your committee is.
We're now whole, thank you very much, Mayor. And Brandy's getting ready to schedule a meeting, and we're ready to rock and roll.
Okay. Got Festivals of Chimes and Lights?
Yes, we're back and actually working hard because the event is coming up December 7th. I think the big takeaway from this meeting is that we are thinking of relocating Santa at the end, when he goes down to the park. We're going to move him closer to the port office and utilize that square area in there, which we're working on details, but we'll have to talk with the police. So we've got some changes to make, but we like the idea of condensing the area, and we think it'll be safer. And then the merchants can be more involved also because the backs of their establishments will all be lit up and a lot of traffic. So that's kind of the big thing that we're changing then. We still have some details to work out, one of them being whether we will have a movie that day or not, and that remains to be seen. That's pretty much it, and we're working on who's going to be involved, and I'll bring that to the next, after the next meeting, which is September 16th, 3:30 here at City Hall.
We're working hard to make sure you have chimes this year.
I hope so, we stood around last year going over.
Waiting for it to happen, I know, and it didn't.
Thank you very much.
So, outside agencies, month of August, none of the countywide policy boards meet, so.
Yes, but get your calendars out. November 14th is the legislative reception that KRCC hosts. It's a Thursday, and it's going to be at the Silverdale Beach Hotel.
Okay, thank you.
What time did you say?
I didn't.
It's like 6:00 p.m. or something?
Yeah, there's an orientation that's earlier, and then the reception.
The orientation is for newly electeds. So probably 6:00 o'clock, tentatively.
Somewhere in there, yeah.
I have it blocked from 5 to 9, just to make sure there's plenty of time, so.
You have to travel, probably, and where is it going to be at again?
It's Silverdale Beach Hotel this year, it's a little more centrally located.
Wonderful. See here, we're to the mayor's report. So we have a lengthy one last week, so I've got, remember, no council meeting next week. Our next meeting is September 10th, which is a regular business meeting. We have a September 17th work study, and items that'll be included on that was the puppy mill discussion, that was directed last week to add that. And staff's working on a, we're going to have an item for the Bay Street pedestrian path, and it'll be a recap of the history and actions related to the pathway to date. Staff is working on large poster board maps that'll be displayed at that meeting, as well as a detailed timeline. Because we have to remember, four of the seven council members here haven't been involved in any of the actions, nor, so it'll be a good refresher for everybody, as well as the public, as, you know, where we've traveled on this project. So, and I've also heard a number of rumors related to high-speed ferry operations coming to Annapolis, and I can assure you, that's simply not true. I've served on the Transit Board since 2011, and I can assure you, there's never been any discussion of that ever. And it's not part of the plan that was put to get to the voters. So the plant, Transit's planned dock improvements in Annapolis are to make the float compliant with the American Disabilities Act. It's too short, and the ramp is causing it to be too steep. To have a longer ramp, it has to have more dock to be able to hold it up. So that's my understanding of the situation. So today, in this very chambers, we had our fourth annual kitty hall. Humane Society was here today, and the first year we did it, they brought nine or 10 kittens. Nobody went home with a kitten, so I was told later that one person adopted, got information, and left with a kitten. We had citizens in and out of here all day long today, was very well received. We had nine kittens here, and seven of them went home with someone today, so it was pretty cool. So with that, it's end of my report. Remember again, no meeting next week. Next meeting is September 10th. So directors' reports, Mr. Dorsey.
Yeah, just, I had in my notes too about the September work study where we'll be, again, talking about the pathway project from 2005 through 2019 with, you know, decisions along the way, so that everybody can understand, you know, how that started, what the vision was, 2014, where there was a moment in time to regroup, and where we're at today. So I look forward to presenting that.
Debbie, do you have anything for HR?
Just would like to remind you, if you haven't done so already, please return your new life insurance enrollment form now that you've approved the change in carrier. I need to get those to AWC this week, so thank you.
Mr. Bond?
Just one thing, earlier this summer, we discussed at work study a speed limit ordinance for Old Clifton Road near the new park and on Glenwood and Sidney as well. We just got the study back today, and so we'll be getting that ready to bring forward for your consideration here at the first opportunity we have.
And we'll be bringing back, I think, that first meeting, it's September 2, that no parking, changes to the no parking there by the park. I know we're in the process of posting it, but we need to get an ordinance before you to make that, so the police can enforce it. So we hope, hopefully with the signs there, it'll just deter some behavior because it's quite unsafe. So Sharon?
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Chief Brown, welcome to, I think it's your first council meeting other than when you got sworn in.
This is, very exciting, but I do not have anything for you guys tonight, so thank you.
Thorpe Anderson?
I don't have anything either.
Okay, so we're to our second citizen comment period, and you have up to three minutes for anyone wishing to address the council this evening.
How's it going? Mayor Patanzu and a member of the city council.
You identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Chuck Huck, I'm here as a citizen and also as the owner of Whiskey Gulch. Mayor Patanzu and a member of the city council, I do not believe you're evil people. I'm not a tin hat type guy. I don't believe there's any kind of craziness like that. I do choose to believe there is good in people. However, we have a lot of work to do. I know cooler heads can work together to resolve these issues. I do have faith that we can work together. Citizens of Port Orchard, we have plenty of work to do ourselves. I hear people talking about change, well, we need to be part of this change that we insist on. We can sit on our hands, or we can get involved. We live in a get-rich-quick society. We tend to do all we can to see what's beyond the forest, all the while not enjoying the nourishing and the beauty that's inside. I believe that's the case here. Annapolis has become revitalized and becoming a booming part of our community. So why would we hurt this progress? Why not enjoy the forest that we've created? What we in Annapolis have worked tirelessly to provide you, our community, is I'm extremely proud of. The forest, I mean, what's beyond the forest is only blue sky, it's the unknown. Why not use the example of what we've done in Annapolis as an example to some of the other struggling parts of the community, and what you can do if you put work into it, and money, and your heart? This city is full of talented people. Its citizens and elected officials are all talented. If we as a city embrace the talents of many and not the persuasive ability of the few, this city of people can become a proud community. A thriving community isn't built by a few. A thriving community isn't built overnight. A thriving community is built from the vision of many from all walks of life. A thriving community works with many citizens. It affects, it affects small, to go and break a few eggs to make an omelet is no way to run a city. And I feel like we're the eggs. Chosen and trusted leaders of our community, listen to your heart and understand that trust, and understand that the citizens of this community trust you. When all is said and done, money and power mean very little at the end. What really matters is the impact you put, that you have on people's lives. You guys have the opportunity to have an impact on many lives. Your community needs you in a very, very positive way. I'm going to leave you with this, I had a lot more to say, but we in the community, we deserve transparency. And one thing my grandfather used to say to me, he used to always say, just because you have the right, doesn't mean it's right. And it's not right, what you're doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to address the council? Actually, just whatever you've got, give to the city clerk, please.
So we got each of you a book, and it's called How to Kill a City. And it talks about things that are going on in our society, where the city is going down a path where it will do that. And I fear that you're on that path right now, and I hope that you seriously take and read this book and understand that pathway you're heading down. It can be avoided, development can be done together, and it can be done effectively. So these are for you guys.
I'm Robert McGee of Whiskey Gulch as well. So last week, we obviously had a pretty emotional council meeting. It was heated, and everybody had a lot to say. The Annapolis committee addressed the damages intended down there and the transparency issues. And since then, a couple of council members have reached out to us, and you know what? That means a lot to us. But it's still a little disconcerting that these council members don't know anything. And that tells me there's a lack of transparency in the council itself and at City Hall, and that's not okay either. You guys need to be talking about these things as well. For council members to tell me they had no idea Annapolis was in harm's way, or anything about what's going on, I hate to think it's disingenuous, and I hope it's not, but it's definitely complacent because in November, you guys approved here right-of-way services to start taking right-of-way in people's properties away, and you all approved that. That's complacency. If you didn't know what was going on and you approve something blindly, that's not okay. That is not okay. You need to know what you're approving, and that's what you approved. The mayor, doing his homework. Good job, Rob. I am concerned about this Kitsap transit situation. And these documents that we get and we find, they tell us from the city, it's for ADA maneuverability. But the Kitsap Transit documents also adverbially just say it's a dock larger vessels. What is the public supposed to think? We know what those larger vessels are. The community is not stupid. They're very smart, and they're very intelligent, and they can read between the lines. So when we see these documents, which are for you, we read between those lines, and we see a bigger picture of what's going on. They said in the public hearing for the Annapolis pier expansion, we have no intentions this time of putting those boats here. However, we may use the watermen as backup periodically. Well, that is a fast ferry, and we've seen the Rich Passage dock there many times, testing the waters, as it were. So we have some transparency issues there, and to be quite honest with you, I don't trust what you're saying because the documents don't add up with what you're saying here. Lastly, where's the oversight on this pathway design? Is the oversight the city? You have to answer for the issues at Tremont and Annapolis and McCormick and some serious misconduct we had issues with? Who's reviewing the plans? The city? That's the fox guarding the hen house. Where are the stormwater plans? Where are the safety and lighting plans? Where are the tribal approvals for each individual segment? Where are the Arnold Creek Crossing studies? Where are the 100-year floodplain crossing studies? Where are the economic impact studies? Where are the residential impact studies? Where are the Jersey Barrier noise impact studies? Where are the pedestrian needs and use studies? Where are the bicyclist needs and use studies? Where are the pedestrian workforce need studies? Where are the construction impact to residents and business studies? What are the plans to keep residences accessible during construction? Where are the plans to keep businesses open and accessible? Where are the plans for construction easement impacts and restoration? Where are the TSSC plans? Where are the landscaping plans? Where are the plans for completing and implementing mitigation? You've had years to implement these plans and keep the public in mind, and you haven't done so. So many unanswered questions, and the only thing we know
McGee, your time is up.
Is that our residences, businesses are going to be negatively impacted. You have much more to do, and you can do better.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to address the council this evening? Circle?
My name's Julie Sharoth, and I'm the owner of Creative Kids Learning Center down on the corner of Bay Street and Tracy Avenue, which is located in the Annapolis area. I got to say, when the Bay Street project was first announced, I was thrilled. It's a wonderful boardwalk downtown. A few years ago, when I heard they were talking about the Annapolis portion, I was thrilled because that would mean the eyesore across the street from me that the city owns, it's a vacant building. It would, we see squatters, drug activity, it would be gone, so it was like, yay. But then I heard whisperings of imminent domain and damage to area residents and businesses, and there's something wrong with that. You know, 15 years ago or so, the city called and said I would have to move my fence. It runs along Bay Street, and they wanted me to move it back several feet. It had been there for 30 years. In 2001, I raised it up six feet for the safety of the kids, up to the six-feet level. And when the neighbor complaint had come in and said they couldn't see, I just said, how about if I cut down the privacy slats? So we did that. Then the city called again and said, the neighbor's still complaining, you're going to have to move your fence. I should have fought harder, but we moved our fence, and that was from one neighbor complaint. One caused me to lose part of my playground. Here, you've got area residents, businesses, a whole bunch of people with complaints. But in this scenario, it's against the city, and the city's plan for Annapolis. And the only reason nobody's listening is because the complaint is against the city. That's infuriating. The idea that they would take parking, which is so precious in Annapolis, I mean, do you guys know, well, of course you know that you're the city council, but when you apply for a business in the city, you have to state how you're going to accommodate parking for your clientele and your staff. And if you take away the ability for people to have the parking that's needed to hold that license, that could threaten their license. It would also threaten their financial viability if people can't park and even come. So the downtown part of the boardwalk is great, and it's on the water, and it didn't take anyone's parking, and it didn't butt up on anyone's porch or next to their door. It seemed like it accommodated all of the needs of everyone involved. And I'm a little confused as to how Annapolis gets the short end of the stick in this deal. So people need to be listening to the people that are going to be impacted. The city's not going to be impacted. The people that live there and work there are going to be impacted, and that's, it's just, it's just not the way that it should work. It should be a partnership. And I would ask, if you were in our shoes, and somebody was going to put a roadway or a path up against your front door, or through your driveway, or right against your property line, you'd be showing up to the city council meeting and saying, do something. So why aren't you doing something? Why aren't you listening to the people that it's going to impact so dramatically? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening?
Hello, I'm Ted Wild.
Hello, I'm Ted Wiles. I'm concerned about the pathway. I think it's beneficial for the city and Annapolis also. But I don't see exactly where the pathway goes. It goes from ferry to ferry, and it seems to me it actually starts right where the children's playground is in, down on Bay Street by the bay. And that seems to be not a good place for bicycles to go down, because who's going to keep the little kids, two and three years old, from stepping in the pathway? They're too quick. But along that, it seems like that we'd be better off having a pathway, maybe, that was from Annapolis down to West Bay. There was a painted path, maybe five feet wide, and install speed bumps along Bay Street. It's already 25 miles an hour. And maybe a digital speed limit sign, and that would make it a safer area. And that's what people want. They want a beneficial pathway where they can walk from Annapolis to downtown Port Orchard with safely. Speed bumps and a painted pathway would do that, and would be pleasing to the eye if it were painted. It would, actually, people would feel like, "I could walk this path." So, let's, let's look at all the alternatives and listen to the people in the community and come up with more ideas. These are just a few. Let's keep Annapolis part of Port Orchard and not against Port Orchard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? Last opportunity.
Hello, I'm Christina Foreman. I'm a resident here in Port Orchard. I've lived here for 32 years. I'm also a small local business owner for 11 years. My parents also owned a store downtown Port Orchard for 10 years. Pretty much grew up my whole life downtown Port Orchard. Port Orchard is a small town that supports each other and supports small businesses. I'm not good at this. I've been going to Whiskey Gulch since they actually opened their doors as a small coffee shop years ago. Over the court, or, over a quarter of my business has actually been built downtown at Whiskey Gulch. Every time I go there, I see my clients of mine that work at the school district, that work at the courthouse, and others that are in the community, grabbing a bitey after work, or during the day, there's other business owners from Port Orchard and beyond meeting clients there. None of these would be bicycling down. It's kind of hard to ask my clients to bicycle down because there's no parking. Every time, or sorry, putting a walking, or walking and bike path where it's slated and taking parking away from Whiskey Gulch and the proper would be crucial to the business, both businesses and other businesses and the houses down there. But it's also crucial to the community, too. Whiskey Gulch is one of the best restaurants we have here in Port Orchard. We don't really have a whole lot of good Mexican restaurants here. And the proper is one of the best barber shops and salon. You can just ask the Port Orchard Facebook page where to get a haircut, and the residents will tell you. The street is busy, and taking away the parking, I cannot take my kid and run across the street when people are driving super fast down there. I love seeing some of the growth downtown Port Orchard, but taking people's property away is not the way to go about it, especially putting in a bike and walk path that will only get used 1/4 to 1/3 of the year. How many of you, you guys, would actually bike downtown in December and January? How many of you in our community, or how many people in our community do you see riding bicycles November through February downtown? As you go about finishing plans, please don't ruin the best thing that Port Orchard has going for it. As I mentioned at the beginning, Port Orchard is a town that supports each other and small businesses. Let's not kill that.
Your comments. Anyone else wish to address the council this evening?
Good evening, I'm Kristi McGee with Whiskey Gulch Coffee Pub. And I just wanted to start by thanking the council members that reached out to us this week and had some questions. We are not against this path, we just want some answers. And I know it's going to be brought up next week, or next month, at council on the agenda. So I don't have a lot to say. I just ask that maybe you think about putting together an unbiased group or a committee access point for us to ask our questions, maybe someone to go to. Right now, our part of the path is really just a bunch of red dashes on the, I think it's on the public utilities page. You have a very detailed outline of the park here in town, all the way down to the trees and where they're planted, and all you see is just dot, 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 out where we are. It would be kind of nice to have an idea of what's going on. It seems like it's far away, with three years being the end date. But that's not a long time to relocate and think of a business plan for us and what to do with our employees and how to handle the construction and the roads. We lost 30% of our business when our road was closed for two days last year, both days. And that's a lot of money and a lot of business and a lot of planning to have to do. How do we staff? How much food do we bring in? We need to plan for those things. It creates waste, and it also affects our staff's paychecks as well. I wanted to just leave a message. I did, I did get you guys some books. I'm a total nerd, and whether you like it or whatever, just read some pages in it. I really think it's great information, even if you don't, you know, whatever your ideas are, I feel like, you know, take what you want from the shopping cart, skim through it, whatever, it's for you. Wanted to, but I just wanted to leave you with a message. I heard on American Pickers last night, of all places, but people love to see buildings and cities revitalized and refurbished in a way that captures and shows the history of its area. It's cool, and it brings communities together with a sense of pride and connection. So maybe keep that an overall theme in redesigning or revitalizing Port Orchard, because I don't disagree that something needs to be done. It really does. But maybe we can all work together. We have some pretty good ideas as a team, so thank you.
Comments? Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? Okay, with that, we're about to, we're not going to join, adjourn the meeting quite yet. The, we're going to have a 15-minute executive session, discuss ongoing and potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, with no action to be taken after our executive session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to just make a bit of clarification for you, Mr. McGee. The waterman is a larger vessel. It is not a high-speed vessel. It does not travel the speeds necessary to go to Seattle. It would be able to go into the revised Annapolis dock. But as the mayor indicated, the real purpose of that is to make that dock accessible, which it has done today.